Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. Today is September 28th. It is 2:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. This will be both a physical meeting and a virtual meeting. Some members of city staff and consultants are participating by teleconference. Guests that are included in staff presentations will be excused from the Ring Central meeting at the conclusion of the agenda item as appropriate. Today's meeting may be viewed live on cable channel 10, HD 1090. The meeting will not be live on YouTube today due to technical difficulties, but will be available for viewing on YouTube after the meeting. So we know, we have heard from Councilman Weisner that he will be attending the meeting late today. He expects to be potentially a half hour late, but we do, I would like to do actually a role, turn to Julie to do a role call, I guess, please, and we do, as we do have one public hearing item on today's agenda. So Clerk Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Muntz?
Present.
Councilmember Stuckey?
Present.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Present.
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hyzen?
Present.
Okay, so we will immediately then go to our agenda, and the first item on our agenda is the Oak Harbor Rotary Club. And today we have a presentation from a Rotary Club member, longtime ex-president Brian Jones, well-known member of our community. Welcome, Brian.
Thanks, Mayor Severance, and it's so good to see so many friendly faces. We're missing a couple of them, but they've actually seen this, so this'll go, I think, well. I've got some just basic remarks for you, a couple of PowerPoint slides for you to see, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project that you may have, right? So, the windmill project, it's a partnership between the Rotary Club of Oak Harbor and the city staff and frankly, the citizens of Oak Harbor. There has been a tremendous demand, both, you know, to you and to the staff, but also on social media and in conversation where people want the windmill back. So the, I, some of you may remember, I think Beth and Tara, you guys were on the council maybe four or five years ago when I came to the council and said, "Look, if you give me a location and a permit and tell me what I can build, we'll do it." And look, you guys have done that, so I'm really excited to have that opportunity to do it. I'm also joined by past president Greg Smith, who's here in the gallery supporting this as well on behalf of the club. So this is a partnership to put the windmill back in Windjammer Park. Some of us locals, we call it City Beach Park, so forgive me if I slip up, it's just habit. You know, our goals are to provide a landmark for our town, not just from a historical standpoint, but as part of the identity of Oak Harbor. Cities need unique things, things that are special about their city. They don't need to look like cookie cutters, and we have one of the best landscapes around, being an island, being what we are as a town, and so I'm excited to help put a monument back that people can take pictures of. But the other goal is that this is going to be a space that the citizens of Oak Harbor can use and not a storage shed like it was in its past life, right? This is going to be a rentable space with bathrooms, with plumbing, with a barbecue outside, with the ability to host birthday parties. You can go rent it out for your families and have special events there and really make memories in the park with this thing. Finally, we really want to represent the desires of the people of Oak Harbor. I'm not Dutch, just so you know, I want to precurse that. I mean, I'm Irish and some Italian, but I'm not Dutch. But I understand the history of this town, and I've heard the people say, "Well, the Dutch weren't the first people here, they're right," right? If you look at westward expansion, the land grabs, the First Nation people that were here long before us, right? The Dutch weren't the first people, but they were the people that came after, and they built roads and they built banks and they built markets and mills and ferries, and they gave us Holland Happening, which was a community celebration. And so we want to honor those people by putting this thing back here and creating this landmark. All right, our team, we've got a great group of people that are working hard to get this done, headlined by Councilman Weisner and Councilman Marshall. Ryan Wallen, who's the chief operating officer of P&amp;L General Contractors, we couldn't do this without construction expertise, and P&amp;L is picking up a big load of this. Bill Larson, who's, you know, used to sit where you sit, and he's working really hard on this with us. We've got business owners like Aaron Searing, we've got the Rotary Club of Oak Harbor, but the part I'm most excited about is we've got the city staff working hard with us on this. They've been fantastic at giving us ideas and understanding about the code and what we need to do to make this thing a reality. And what's been really great is over the past few months, we've had people come out of the woodwork who want to be a part of this thing. I'll address that here in a little bit. All right, beginning, what did we start with? We started with the plans that Mr. Knighton brought over from Holland a long time ago, and we said, "We're not allowed to build this structure," right? So we spent some time and some money in the rotary foot of the bill to sturdy engineering, and we took those plans and we designed it so that we could build it so that it will last, also that it will meet code because no one's allowed to build something that doesn't. But we worked with the city staff to understand, you know, the ADA requirements and the modernizing of this building so that it can be a usable space and not a storage shed. So those are actually the original plans in case anybody's interested. Here's where we are. The Rotary Club of Oak Harbor will fundraise project management and construct the Oak Harbor Windmill, will then gift it to the city. We have your gifting agreement that you used for the angel sculpture, and the many lawyers that are part of our Rotary Club are reviewing it, so just put that, a couple of judges. But we've got that and we're ready to give it to you as soon as we finish it, all right? Rotary Club will build a structure that generates enough money to cover its upkeep. That's the plan for it. You guys will set the rate, decide what it costs to rent out. Hopefully you'll make it affordable for a normal family to do so. Maybe jack it up on the Fourth of July or Holland Happening or like, you know, when people really want to be in the park, make some extra money, right? But we're also at the Rotary Club level going to create a perpetuity fund that if there is a shortcoming or there's something that needs to be done to fix this building, that we have money to do that, all right? Not just ask the city and the taxpayers to pay for it. So we're trying to get this a net zero for the taxpayers ongoing. And what we ask from your side and what we've got frankly is the city of Oak Harbor will support and promote the project as a joint project, that the city of Oak Harbor will contribute in kind and monetarily towards the building of the Oak Harbor Windmill, and you guys have committed to doing those things. The city of Oak Harbor will offer guidance because, you know, we just do stuff. We don't, we could always step the wrong direction. And the city of Oak Harbor will own the finished product post-dedication and maintain it to level required to keep the building open to the public. That's what we ask. Here's our location. You guys have a packet, or you had a packet, I think, your last workshop meeting. I apologize, I couldn't be here, I had to step away for a family thing, but there's the new location. It's not the same as the old location. I think it's actually a better location. The blades are going to be facing the parking lot so that people could get pictures with the backdrop, you know, from that parking area with the whole City Beach Park, Windjammer Park, excuse me, behind it, from a visual standpoint. Hopefully you guys will make postcards and other cool stuff that market the city that way with it, but we think that the location's going to be beautiful and it's not going to obstruct anything else in the city, all right? The little tiny rendering in the up corner, it details some of our plans. Our plans are to have gardens around this thing, but also to have what's called a legacy paver garden. The people of Oak Harbor who are donating money to this thing, we want to put their names in the ground and we want them to always be there so that they can come back and look at it. And so we've got a great way, a great resource, and we're well on our way to fundraising that way. So where are we at today? We've got Gantt charts, we've got project plans, we've got budgets, you know, the engineering is finally finished. We got the structure engineering done really quickly, and in fact, I believe you guys have the document, you have, I think, images of some of those plans, some of the two-by-four, two-by-six, two-by-eight construction. The last part of the engineering we were waiting on was the foundation. How deep did we have to go? You know, how strong does it have to be? How thick does it have to be? And Ryan Wallen, who is at a place called Concrete World, which apparently is a big industry show for construction people, said he got those back from the engineering yesterday, so excited about that. The permit process has started. I know that you, as a council, have done a wonderful thing and relaxed the code so that we can build this thing this tall, as tall as we want it to be, or as tall as it needs to be for the structure. Fundraising has started. We've had businesses, citizens, and we've submitted a lot of grant applications, so we're excited about that. We'll find out about most of those, I think, in fourth quarter of this year. We got a great website up. We had a web designer donate her time, so if you go to ohwindmill.com and check it out, it's a great opportunity for you as council members to donate to the cause and buy a legacy brick. Just saying, it's out there. But it's a, you know, she did a really good job for us and is constantly updating it, so we're excited about that. And then the backend processes are put in place. Rotary Club of Oak Harbor's done a great job, set up an account. We have an auditing system set up through Kingma, Kingma and Associates, you know, to have an accounting firm that's looking over everything, and we are a registered 501(c)(3) charity, our foundation is, so any donations made will be tax deductible, all right? The other thing that's starting to happen is the in-kind donations are being finalized. We have verbal agreements from so many organizations that want to be part of this. We're now putting it down into one-document contracts that they agree to do this because we don't want to break ground unless we have people's commitment to actually doing the work that they say they're going to do. But it's been wonderful, the response. Who's in? There's a list of a bunch of people that are already, have given us checks or signed their name on the dotted line. We've got some great businesses in Oak Harbor and new ones every day. In fact, today I just got a check for $2,500 from Martin's Auto Electric for this. So we're moving, moving, moving. Councilman Marshall told me that he had three checks that got dropped off at his office, so it's happening. We've got a nice volunteer committee, and that is in addition to the membership of the Rotary Club of Oak Harbor, which is 80 people, so we're moving. What else we got? Our big ask, you already did the first one, right? The structure's going to be 54 feet tall and the blades get as high as 83 feet high, right? Or they can be, depending on how it's finally put together. I appreciate, you know, working this into the historical code so that we can do this or art or however it got classified, I'm happy and thankful. We'd love you guys to come out and say that the Oak Harbor City Council officially supports us, all right? You know, we've had the mayor's talked about it, and that's great. We'd love the council to come out, and we'd love it to be unanimous, and if I, if there are concerns, I'm happy to address those today or after this meeting, whatever you'd like. And that's that last part, right? We want this to be something that is, you know, a cool piece of architecture that draws tourism into this town, right? That gets people interested, even more interested in Holland Happening, right? We want to, we want to put people in hotels to come see this thing and hang out and be a part of it, you know, similar to the artwork that you guys are considering around town. We want, we want this to be a great thing for the town, not only as a place to hang out, but economically viable and an opportunity. And so with that, that's what I have for you today. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I can give you whatever details you require. We've been working really hard on this thing, and, you know, we're likely not to make the July 4th ribbon cutting that we had hoped for. Just things took a little bit longer than we'd hoped, but we're definitely moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'll turn to the council for any possible questions. Councilman Muntz?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, in talking with Hank over the years, what is the outside construction going to be?
So it's a tricky question.
It's not just plain wood.
Yeah, no, it can't be, not in that location, right? So there are a couple of different components to this. The, my inclination is to go stucco, right? And, you know, to use a stucco-like surface like ephes or something that is a surface that isn't porous, that doesn't let water in or salt in, right? That requires limited to little maintenance as we go up, but we have to find a way to do it in a smooth way so that it looks right on the building. I think Ryan, Ryan doesn't believe, Ryan Wallen, if I mention, he doesn't believe that this is going to be a problem whatsoever, but we can't use wood, right? We want this thing to last. So, you know, you can, there are, there are concrete products like Hardy that's made in sheets rather than individual boards like we see on houses, but, you know, we're, the decking has to be a composite, similar to Trex, if those of you are familiar with those. The handrails are going to be made by, out of a product called Fibrex, which is a composite, a wood polymer composite that doesn't rot, decay, and has a life of 200 years. And so the exterior windows and doors are going to come from my company, Renewal by Anderson. They're rated for 200 years. And the big question is, what do we do for the roof? So they're still working on that. We don't have a definite answer, but it's probably all going to be concrete products.
Okay, just my concern is, kind of no matter what is, I can understand that, I know you were preventing the water damage, but there's moss and algae that's going to get on it. I have a metal roof. I mean, water can't permeate, but I still have problems with algae on certain sides and has to be sprayed. The old windmill, there was not anything in our arsenal at Public Works that was high enough to be able to spray it or to be able to get in there and really clean it, and that added to the decay, and it probably should have been done three times a year or at least two, and most of the time it, after a while, it didn't even get done every year. So I worry about the maintenance costs, and they had to get a piece of equipment from Mount Vernon was the closest to bring it over, and so they kind of had a week or two, and then it would show up, and then the staff would have to work on it, and so that's what I worry about.
I get it.
Hank asked a lot of questions about that, saying it will need maintenance, and the money needs to be there, and they need to be prepared to rent this expensive piece of equipment to bring over. So love the idea, this and that, but you can build it. If you can't take care of it, then it's not going to look very well after
I agree.
...a couple of years. So that is my main concern, after Hank having tried to take care of the other one and this and that, that was a concern from him too, so.
Sure, so it's a further discussion with city staff and our group, and like, if we need to keep raising money after the project's built, we'll keep raising money to do, to get what we need.
I mean, the old one was not, the blades were not 83 feet high, so
No.
You've made it a real challenge now to get something over here tall enough to be able to be sure all of that's clean. So that's just, that's my worry. It sounds wonderful and stuff, and a lot of that is, but if you haven't really thought out everything on the maintenance, I just don't want it to see after 20 years or 15 years that it doesn't look like we had planned in our mind, if that makes sense.
I, I get it. I just don't see it as a big, a big obstacle to overcome. If we need to buy a piece of equipment for the city, then that's what we do. You know, I mean, like, and I, and I appreciate you telling me this, because, you know, we had talked about, like, how, how does this structure hold up against the salt air and sideways rain and hundred knot winds from time to time? We hadn't really talked about, how do we, how do we spray off the top of the blades, right? So we'll definitely add that to our list. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Councilor Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for putting all this down in this presentation here. It looks wonderful, really does. You gave us all the specifics here of the windmill and, you know, why it's what Oak Harbor wants. So much of a time commitment on your behalf, and, you know, maybe this is a conversation for later, but would love to know why, why you care so much and why you're doing this.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. You know, I grew up here, right? This is my home, and I have an incredible memory. Mayor Al Koochi invited my mom and dad and my sister and I to be on the second floor of the windmill on the Fourth of July when I was probably 10 years old. My mom was doing some, you guys know my mom, she's doing some volunteer work somewhere, and Al's like, "You come hang out with us on Fourth of July." So we got to do that, and I thought, what an incredible memory that was, sitting in City Beach Park, watching the fireworks from the second floor of that thing, right? And thinking that there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of other people, maybe thousands, that have some sort of memory tied to that thing, right? Whether it was through Holland Happening, through Dutch Heritage, or an event like that, you know, I am always looking for things that will better this town and make it unique and keep it from being the same town that you see in 100 other places. So when I started looking at this thing, when it was torn down, I thought, that's an absolute shame, and then I heard that it was going to be brought back, but then there wasn't a lot of movement towards that, and now the plan's changing, and we're going to put a bunch of little windmills all over town instead of one big one. I thought, that's not what people are asking for. And so every time I see that, now, I'm sure you guys see this thing, the Whidby Community Facebook group with a ridiculous number of people, and 90% of it's negative, right? But I, I'm trying to help you guys out, because quite frankly, the people of town are going to keep complaining until we get this thing built, and then you're not going to actually get like what, you know, you come up with a great idea of something to put in this town, something that could benefit the town, but the sentiment is negative that the city council's not listening. I think you are listening, all right? And so I want to help do this. I also love the idea of doing stuff that doesn't cost taxpayers a bunch of money, you know, I just, fiscally conservative, and I want to do something cool in our town.
Well, thank you so much, Brian. Yeah, I, I support this 100%, and your idea of, you know, an official endorsement from council, I love that idea. You know, really look forward to a point in time in the future, you know, July 4th, for instance, where I can tell my kid, "I'll meet you at the windmill at 6 o'clock." You know, I, I know we all, I know we all have cellphones now, but, but the memories of July 4th from the past and the windmill, they're pretty special. You know, as far as cleaning it, you know, what I'll do quite often, you know, on a two-story house, you know, from the ground level, and your chimney will start to get up near that 50-foot height. A juice box, it's a chemical pump, you'll pump a bleach and a Jomax solution. You could clean that whole building, and one person could clean that building in less than a day.
Well, we'll find a way to help the city with this.
Absolutely. Awesome. Thank you.
Councilor Stuckey?
Yeah, thank you so much for doing this, and I'd like to thank the Rotary Club for doing this as well. That's painful for me, coming from the other Rotary Club, but we'll let it fly.
You're still, you're still a Rotarian.
I'm still a Rotarian. I'm proud of it.
We'll take your donation.
You know, and I did donate.
It's tax deductible, Brian.
(laughing). Are you able to share how much you have fundraised to date?
Yeah, so we've, actual cash, about $32,000 without really trying, all right? We were trying to get a couple of in-kind commitments done and signed off on before this fall that aren't, they aren't done yet. People were waiting on those engineering docs that, that I mentioned earlier, that we just got yesterday. And so we, you know, and what I'm talking about is site and utilities and then the concrete work, right? And we have, we have two companies that are considering actually doing that work for free. We believe that we have approximately $200,000 in in-kind commitments already, right? And so there, you know, there's a long list of construction companies that want to participate, and, you know, it's like, we'll do labor for all the roofing, we'll do labor for all the framing, we'll do, and they come out and they tell us what they're willing to do, and we're grateful, so.
And then one comment, not to knock on one thing you said, but the website, it's a great website. I don't think it has been updated. I've looked at it quite a bit, and the donors haven't been updated, the Facebook link at the bottom doesn't work.
Oh, I better, I'll get on that. That's on my, that's on me.
It's, it, it looks great, and I think updates the public of where things are. I've been updating the donors, I just think even have a Facebook, I think it'll be good for help with PR.
All right. We have a page that's about to be loaded onto, which is a progress page that shows the steps in doing this, and so we're, we're thinking that'll help with our fundraising as well.
Awesome. Well, thanks you so much again. Appreciate it.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Brian. I think that this is proof positive that when this community, you know, gets together and puts its mind to something, there is nothing that we can't accomplish, and there is certainly things that the private sector can accomplish much more efficiently than the city can, so I really appreciate this group of citizens being willing to take on this project.
I will echo your thoughts in a year.
Yeah.
In a year, I'll be like, Tara said it.
(laughing) But yeah, a year is a heck of a lot faster than we would be able to, to jump through all of the red tape and put it together, so thank you. I love that you've put thought into, into its legacy, into its upkeep, into how much it's going to cost and what it's going to take to keep it maintained, and I love that it's going to be functional. You know, when you and I were growing up, for most of that time, the windmill was just a decoration. It had gotten, it had gotten so old that you couldn't go inside it or use it or do anything with it anymore, so love, love, love that it's going to actually be more than just a decoration, because that's what it needs to be. It's a wonderful legacy, and I would absolutely be in favor of the council issuing a statement in support, whether that's in the form of a resolution or a proclamation, maybe, I don't know.
And a newspaper article.
Or a newspaper article, and/or a newspaper article.
Putting it out there.
Maybe some social media posts to help bring publicity to the project, yeah. Yeah, Blaine, Mayor, whatever form that should take, I'd be happy to assist. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Tara.
And thank you to all of the volunteers and donors.
So when Councilor Marshall let us know he would not be able to be here today, he did make one comment about the windmill. He said, "I 100% support the windmill replacement project." So that was Councilor Marshall and pretty well hearing from everybody here, so.
I appreciate it, and I'm pretty sure Jim, since he's names all over my presentation, is probably in support of this thing, so, you know, look, I, I think it's good for our community, I don't see a downside.
Thank you very much, Brian.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me, guys.
Thanks, Greg, for coming. You're welcome to stay.
I gotta go coach.
Okay, we'll move to item number two on the agenda, which is under Finance. In today's, at today's meeting, we will have a public hearing, revenue sources and property taxes for the upcoming 2023-2024 biennial budget, and today we have our Finance Director, Mr. David Goldman. I hope we have.
Yeah.
There he is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, David Goldman, Finance Director. Can everybody see that?
We just, yes.
All right, perfect. Here we go. So this is the required first of three public hearings for the annual budget. This one is going to be dealing with revenue projections, and as I said before, it is a, it is a public hearing, so let's move to the next slide. So per RCW 8455120, the legislative body must hold a public hearing on revenue sources for the coming year's budget or biennial budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenues prior to the property tax certification deadline of November 30th of each year. And for this particular year, the property tax levy certification is scheduled for November 15th, 2022. And as you know, there are two fire ballot measures on for the November general election. They are not included in the preliminary budget or these revenues. If, well, if or when that those ballot initiatives pass in November, then the revenues and corresponding expenditures will be added to the budget. So the purpose of the revenue projections is, one, for sustainability. It allows the council and staff and the public to see an estimate of what will be available for revenues before the operating and capital expenditures are budgeted, and also it provides for a comparison of budget to actual. So that means it will provide a lookback to actual revenues received in previous years in comparison to what is being projected for future revenue streams. So steps to these revenue projections, we provide the initial revenue projections at this meeting, and those projections will be adjusted based on additional information, additional revenue trend information that we receive. Every month we receive new revenues from various sources, and we look at those, and depending on the direction, those from various sources, and we look at those, and depending on the direction those revenues are going in, we may have to make adjustments to what we eventually put in the final budget, or the final biennial budget. Economic data, I mean, the Fed just raised their interest rates by three-quarters of a percent. Not sure what effect that's going to have on inflation, or on the economy going forward. There's a lot of talk, but once we start seeing those numbers pan out over the next few months, we'll have a better sense of where we might be headed, and we can make adjustments accordingly. We might also get in more information regarding grants or other intergovernmental assistance that we've applied for, and also additional staff input. So, due to difficulties in projecting during periods like now of economic uncertainty, revenues have been budgeted conservatively. And also, these projections do not include resources. These only include revenues, and one of the main resources that all the funds have is the amount of unencumbered fund balance. Those will be discussed at the October workshop, along with the budget. So, revenue overview of all the funds. So, this is a table of the all-funds revenue per fund. There's three years of actuals, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. We have a projection for twenty-two, and keep in mind, these projections were done about a month ago, so there will, there will be tweaks as we continue with the budget process. And we also have our preliminary twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget amounts. And we have a more detailed breakdown of each one of these rows in the upcoming slides. First row is General Fund, then you have the Internal Service Funds, Marina Funds. There's a bunch of miscellaneous funds that we went over in a previous primer, Senior Services, and then you have the Utility Funds, and then the Streets, Saturials, and TBD Funds. You might notice that in two thousand twenty-three, there are some peaks, and that's mostly because we expect to spend the bulk of the ARPA revenue in twenty-three, and also in twenty-four. And there's also other grants and one-time revenues we might be receiving too, in addition to the ARPA money. So, this is a pie chart of the revenues per fund. The General Fund is the largest fund at twenty-eight percent of all the revenues. Surfund is next, and we also have the Water Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Storm Drain. Those make up the Utility Funds. We have the Marina Funds, our five Internal Service Funds. We have our Transportation Funds over here. And then we have the various miscellaneous funds, such as some capital project funds, some debt service funds, REIT funds, our capital projects, for example. So here are the revenue categories, broken up by type, excise taxes, grants, cares, and ARPA, inter-fund allocations, miscellaneous, property tax, sales tax, transfers in from the various funds, utility revenues, which is our largest category, and the utility tax and franchise fees as well. And this bottom chart shows those figures as a percentage of the total. This slide shows those same figures on a stacked bar chart. It's more visual than numbers, but it shows the, the same information as behind these, this chart, as the previous, the previous one. So you can see utility revenues, and orange is the largest amount of revenues. So the different categories will be discussed now. The first category here are excise taxes. Those include the motor vehicle fuel tax, the Capron funds, and REIT One and REIT Two. Those are classified as excise taxes per the Estate Bars manual. Now, the top part of the chart shows the REIT funding, and the bottom part shows the motor vehicle fuel tax, and the Capron charges as well. The REIT, the REIT funding is more variable than the, the transportation funding. It's based on real estate activity, and you could see in two thousand twenty-one, we had a significant amount of real estate activity. We're projecting, the first half of twenty-two is pretty, pretty decent, tracking along with twenty-one, but the second half of twenty-two looks like it, it dropped off a bit. So, the thing about the transportation funding, the motor vehicle fuel tax, and the Capron, those revenues peaked in two thousand and seven. The motor vehicle fuel tax peaked at five-hundred-and-forty-thousand, and it's currently ranging about twenty to twenty-five percent lower than that peak. And this is one of these revenues that unless the state comes in and fixes it, it's not, it doesn't look like it's something that will be, will, will grow anytime soon. It might actually start to level off as cars get more efficient, and cars might use different sources of energy, you know, to run, to run as the time, time goes forward. Capron is funded partially by motor vehicle fuel taxes, but also by a number of other sources, such as CAR Tabs and a few other sources. And that funding also peaked in two thousand seven. It hasn't dropped like the motor vehicle fuel tax, but it's pretty much flatlined since two thousand seven. And as, as you're probably aware, though, this, this whole time, the cost of transportation projects has, has not flatlined. It's, it's, it's increased, as probably Steve Schuler, our Public Works Director, or Alex can attest to over in Public Works. So it's probably something we, we want to discuss, not, not necessarily today, but kind of, you know, think about discussing maybe over the next few meetings when it comes to budget, to see what we can do about making that more sustainable over the longer term. I mean, Alex and Steve brought to our attention, actually, a, a new piece of legislation that might possibly help mitigate this situation. So, effective this July, turns out that TBDs are permitted to increase their sales tax authority by, from point two, which we currently have adopted, to point three. Now, that's not an excise tax, that's a sales tax. So because it's a sales tax, it'll increase over time as prices go up and economic activity hopefully continues to expand. But the difference is, with this additional one percent, or point one percent, one, it could be designed a little bit differently than the current TBD, so the use of the funds can be expanded beyond what the current Street Saver Plan has. And two, this additional point one doesn't need to go to the voters. It can be done councilmatic, as they call it, done by the city council. And in addition, the legislature authorized TBDs to be renewed by voters indefinitely every ten years. It used to be, it could be renewed once, so you have a total of twenty years. They changed the law so that can be renewed indefinitely for ten-year increments, up to ten-year increments. Also, I'm talking to Steve during the budget process, he mentioned that where he had worked previously, streets received an annual transfer from the General Fund to support streets activities. And if we were to implement something like that, we would probably need to identify a new source of revenue of the General Fund to support such an ongoing expense per our financial policies. Going on, this is a slide of our grants. In addition, it includes the CARES Act funding that we received, and also the ARPA funding that we have received, and we anticipate expending over twenty-three and twenty-four, in addition to other grants that we've applied for, and also that earmarked that we had talked a little bit about at last week's meeting as well. And the, the, the different colors show which fund these revenues are budgeted in. So these are inter-fund allocations. These, for twenty-three and twenty-four, it includes adjustments for inflation, and also for new allocations for facility reserve, for replacements, and also for street staff. So miscellaneous, these are revenues that are not contained in any other category. We just kind of lumped it together, otherwise we'd have like fifty slides. These include our development permits, our gambling tax, our liquor and marijuana tax, you know, our, our, the school district SRO revenues, all the revenues that you could see on that slide, including our, our marathon revenues, which is another item that we should probably think about discussing, you know, in the future. The, the marathon, you know, just looking at the balances in that fund, it's been losing money, or, or the expenditures hasn't been exceeding revenues since two thousand ten, and it's actually had a negative cash balance since two thousand fifteen. Now, it's allowed to have a negative cash balance, because the, the marathon fund is a sub-fund of the General Fund, and when we do our annual financial reports to the state auditor, all the sub-funds gets rolled up into the General Fund, and when you add everything together, the balance is fine. But that particular sub-fund does have a negative cash balance, and that negative amount grew by thirty thousand dollars last year, and it looks like it might be on track to do the same thing this year. It gets about fifteen thousand from the city's LTAC grants every year. In addition, in two thousand twenty-one, we received a one-time twelve-thousand-dollar county LTAC grant for the marathon. So, you know, if the, if the city council desires to maybe take a look or correct the situation going forward, some potential solutions could be to, you know, it could include if the LTAC committee was to award more funding for the marathon, but they're independent of the city council, so that's, it'll be their decision what they decide to do. Additional, maybe additional county or other grants could be applied for. Maybe the, the race fees to enter the different races could be, could be looked at. Maybe the General Fund does a, does an annual transfer to, to kind of, on paper at least, balance, you know, balance out this fund, this sub-fund. Or maybe the city takes a closer look at its involvement in this particular operation. So the next slide is property taxes. Property taxes have increased by one percent plus new construction every year. The two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four figures on the screen do not include revenues from the November fire ballot measures. Those may be included in the budget, depend, you know, pending the results of the election in November. Sales taxes, those increased from two thousand nineteen to twenty-one due to the collection of the voter-approved Transportation Benefit District, the point-two-percent sales tax. You can see the blue here are the TBD portion of all these sales taxes that you see there. Now, due to the uncertainty concerning the economy, the sales tax projections have been budgeted conservatively. Transfers in, these are transfers from other funds throughout, you know, throughout our budget, and they're, they're primarily for capital projects. Their, two thousand nineteen was pretty large, due to the fact that it was still during the time when the Clean Water Facility was under construction, and there were transfers between, you know, different funds, like the bond proceeds were transferred over to the Clean Water Facility Fund and so on. And that was the same kind of thing in years before two thousand nineteen as well. You can see it, things dropped off in two thousand twenty. Transfers kind of came back in twenty-one and twenty-two. It's, this is all just based on, you know, construction activity, and also where the funding's coming from. If it's a grant, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a transfer, and it would go directly into the construction fund. But, you know, the transfers in just, are transfers between, you know, between the different funds. So these are the utility revenues. They're, they're derived from rates and system development fees. And the projections for twenty-three and twenty-four are from the efforts conducted by staff, and also the city's utility rate consultants, FCS Group Incorporated. And the system development fees revenues are based on current rates, and those revenues may be updated based on, on future city council action. These are our utility tax and franchise fees. Utility tax revenues are derived as a percentage of the utility bills, and this, these projections are also derived by the work done by staff and our city's utility rate study consultants. And our city's franchise fees from cable subscribers have been pretty steady, at about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. So, the next steps in the budget process include, at, at the October twenty-sixth City Council Workshop, there'll be a presentation of the mayor's preliminary two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget with department presentations. And there will be a presentation by Development Services on the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan. On November first, at that city council meeting, we'll continue the presentations, we'll have public safety, and any other departments that ran out of time in the previous meeting, do their budget presentations for the upcoming biennial budget. On November fifteenth, we'll have a city council meeting. It'll be, there'll be two, two items. First will be a public hearing to set property tax levies like we do every year, and the second, and like I said, those won't include the, you know, the fire ballot items. Those will be included at a later date, depending on what happens in the vote. This is simply the customary, you know, annual, you know, one, one percent, you know, limited to one percent increase on, on the existing property tax levies. And there'll also be a mandatory public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four biennial preliminary budget. City council meeting, sorry, this is county, city council meeting. There'll be a meeting either in November or December, early December, to adopt the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. Per, per law, that date has to occur on or before the first Monday in December, and we're still determining, you know, what meeting that, that, that'll fall on. So, with that, are there any questions regarding revenues for the upcoming budget?
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. So, so this is a public hearing. So before we turn to council for questions, I think at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there, ask our clerk if we've received any public comments on this item from, from our public.
Thank you, Mayor. No, we have not received any comments from the public regarding this item.
Okay, thank you. And then turn to the public that are here today. And not seeing any comments, then we will close the public hearing and turn to city council, Councillor Muntz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Goldman, has anyone gotten an opinion or feeling from our current state legislature? I know that there's elections coming up, but that Cat Cake Prawn Fund is always kind of an iffy. I mean, it's only the islands that are getting it. And there are a lot of cities, small and medium, that would love to have the money we have, that we get from that to help with paving and whatever. But some years, it seems a little more dicey. So has anyone heard anything, or you wait till after the election? The problem is, is we have to make the decision before then. I believe Mr. Obern has an idea. Please, sir.
David, if you want to, Mr. Goldman, if you want to comment, but otherwise, I would be happy to speak with that.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. I think the city, if you recall, had it as one of its goals before. We decided it's better to just kind of stay stealth on that issue. So, interesting, we had an interim, interim Finance Director, and very, very familiar, and he never heard of Capron. So, my recommendation is we stay stealth on it, and we are glad we, we have it, and, and continue to do it. Certainly, we want to let our legislated ten representatives know that we want to keep it, and so it's easier to keep something in than add to it. But certainly, it is an issue aggregate of the whole thing, like he was talking about. We're trending a little bit better than the other motor vehicle taxes, so that's actually a good thing, fuel taxes that we get. And it's, like was mentioned here, I think I have a new Public Works Director, and he never heard of a fund that didn't have a subs, the Street Department that didn't have a subsidy from the General Fund. And now we've, we've kind of done our General Fund that way, where we focus on, on police, fire, and parks as our primary departments that are a hundred percent general-funded, and to squeeze out additional amount for street is just a really pragmatic thing. So, we can cut services, or we can look at other revenue options, and that's why David did bring up some other options. And we're absolutely looking at another revenue option for the General Fund here with fire for, for operating costs on our referendum, and that's the reason why we, we have to do that, is we, we just don't have the current funding, and with the cap we have on one percent, it's almost been two decades, and inflation actually going a lot above that over that time. We continue to kind of have that gap. So, it's a challenge. I certainly, I think the mayor and I lobby and, and, and regular basis, and some of the council members do, and we'll bring it up to them and continue to have their support for, for the Capron funds. But that's a real blessing to us, fortunate that we had some powerful legislatures that got that in in the past, and so certainly, we want to continue with that.
Yeah, Mary Margaret Hoggan and Barb Babely took over on pushing that big time. And yes, it is a huge blessing to us, since the street funds are usually the first ones cut. But we have TBD, which we do for ten years, and being able to automatically just... cut. But we have TBD, which we do for 10 years, and being able to automatically just keep it going. Do we always have to go back to the voters? I didn't see that legis, we do, okay?
Yeah, we, it's 10 years. We could go back. The original legislation was you can only do it two times. A number of cities are getting there, or they've already done the two times. We were behind everybody else when, remember when we were doing this. A lot of other cities have had it a lot longer than we have. And so they took off the cap limit, they increased it another 1/10 of a percent, and then also allowed some pragmatic, what's it called, councilmatic approval for increasing it. So, some flexibility, something that we're really not going to push doing now, but something that we can consider in the future.
Okay. The other question I had, Mr. Goldman, is I know losing race week was a blow. Yes, it's a week and it's hectic and everything, but all the hotels, B&Bs, you name it, and the grocery stores all responded that that was the largest single week of revenue they got was from rest, race week. I know that the city may not be making money, or barely breaking even on the marathon, but I think for our lodging in the area, it's a huge boom for them. And so I would, I guess, I'm caught between, we need things that will break even, but if we suddenly take it away, our, our lodging would, I think, suffer because, you know, two of the biggest weeks they had was the marathon weekend. Some come in on Thursday and, and others leave on Monday. But, you know, it's, it's a, counted as a long weekend. And then race week was anywhere from Friday to the following Sunday or Monday. And so that was a huge drop in income for us. So, I guess I would say, let's go cautiously on that. I mean, I want everything to break even, but yet I don't. For the lodging, you've got to have something to bring people in. That's why I think the windmill and the angel would help bring people in. I saw a huge group down at the PBY museum today. They were all outside the fence and taking pictures, and someone was escorting them in over there to look at the plane and the cars and stuff like that. But I just want to be sensitive for, for that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Councilor Steckey.
Two curiosity questions on revenues. Looking at Marina, I know there's some increase on fees and such, but why did the Marina jump from a little under $2 million to well over $3 million from '21 to '22?
It's likely capital projects.
Okay.
I think here. Which slide is that? Marina? Yes, likely capital projects. That's probably what it is.
Okay. And my other question was, when we're talking about fuel tax, I understand that that may continue to go down. Have, have you heard any more about a possible mileage tax or some way that the state's going to address things with more electric vehicles coming out? I mean, it's all hearsay at this point, but...
I hear stuff, but nothing's been set in stone yet. I, when I lived in California for a few years, we passed something called cap and trade. I'm not sure if that'll fly anywhere, anywhere else, but that did raise a substantial amount of funding. It fixed the situation they were having with their fuel tax. And it did raise a substantial amount of funding for transportation, including multimobile type transportation as well. But, you know, as far as hearing any kind of fix, you know, I'm sure maybe Sabrina or Steve Schuler or Blaine might be able to weigh in on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hoffmeyer.
Yeah, Mr. Goldman, with, with the Marina, you mentioned that extra million there being in capital projects. Would some of that be the, the money allocated for the dredging and some of the insurance claims, et cetera? Is that, is that what you were getting at there?
Yeah, I was thinking of the insurance claims and some of the other projects that were going on.
Okay.
Just wanted to find it here right there. So, what was it?
Yeah. Okay. Blaine's given a thumbs up on that. That is awesome. You know, I, I think it's a good thing that, that Councilor Muns brought up the Capron. I think, I think all of the legislators of Island and San Juan counties are very well aware of what that is. I think the decision to go in stealth mode, there's probably a good one. It is, it is very important to the quality of the roads in, in our counties. And I think our legislators know that. So I think that was a really good thing to bring up. The Marina, or the, not the Marina, the, the marathon. It, it would be nice to see the marathon breaking even on our end, if, if that means they need to ask for, you know, a bigger LTAC request. You know, I know in the past there was even, I think the Elks Lodge volunteered to run it for a couple of years, for instance. And, you know, if I recall, that didn't, that didn't go perfect. It's just, it's so hard to get that many volunteers. So I think, I think having a professional coordinator of the marathon is a great move. And, you know, I think like, again, like Councilor Muns said, I think the, the marathon is incredibly important to us. And, you know, maybe it's a two or three-year plan to get it to where it's revenue neutral on our, on our end at least. And it looks like Blaine has some input there.
Yeah. We doubled our amount we're asking for, for LTAC, so this is a good opportunity. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to kind of put that in there too. So, and we'll look for county money too, for subsidy of that. And so hopefully, we can close that gap by increasing our, our revenue we get from our grant funding from LTAC, from the county and from the city. So last year, unfortunately, we usually got 15,000 and it got cut. And it's part of the abdication we had with more money this year. And that's why I was a supporter of that. So I think with the higher amount allocated, I think the, the marathon has a better chance of getting a, a higher contribution that will help further it and, and help close that deficit, so we can continue to do that. So I think overall, it's probably beneficial to the community. And that's why the, the city took it on. And, and if it made money, I would tell you it'd be done by private people. So, you know, we tend to get in the business of things that don't make money. And this is one of them. But I think certainly it benefits the community. And so, it's a council decision to continue to do it. And we have a great promoter, and he hasn't increased his price in, in, for some time, being cognizant of the fact that, that it does not make money.
That's all, that's all great input, great to hear. And, and yeah, you know, out of, out of all the events that I've seen in, in this community over the last 23 years, if you will, save for, you know, save for the regatta, you know, decades ago, I would say the marathon brings more people here from out of town than anything else I've personally
Councilor Wiener.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to just follow up with that, have we put any thought towards hitting up the City of Anacortes's LTAC?
How about...
City of Anacortes LTAC, we thought, put any thought towards submitting a request?
Now I have. So...
Yeah, and my understanding is they, they've, they closed, but I, I don't think they used all the money. So I think there's some money sitting there, and they're accepting, continuing to accept applications. Obviously, the marathon starts over on that side of the, side of the bridge. And I'm sure that they feel some sort of an impact from, from the racers coming up and starting from that side. So...
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wiener. Good idea. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is under the heading Public Works, Utility Rate Study Update, System Development Charges Adjustments. And for this, we, we have, it looks like our finance director, Mr. David Goldman again, and our public works director, Steve Schuler, for, to present. We've also got a couple of members of the FCS Group available here, or at least one, available to, to answer questions and be a part of this. I'll, I'll turn it to Dave Goldman.
Thank you. And I'll turn it to Chris Gonzalez, with the FCS Group.
All right. So first of all, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. This is my first time flying with one of these headsets. Okay. So here we are. System development charges. Thought, well, to go over what we'll talk about today, I will give a brief introduction and some background. We've got the system development charges that we presented back in August originally, and sort of discussing those, those topics. And then setting up some time for questions and discussion. And feel free to interrupt if you have questions in the meantime. So, development pays, was there something? Okay. Development pays STCs to contribute to the cost of infrastructure for the utilities. The water STC has been in place since 2004. The sewer STC has been in place since 2014, but it's originally based on a 1996 calculation. And there's currently no STC for the storm drain utility. Ultimately, the state statute that authorizes the city to impose these charges, that authority is, is based on the premise that you're recovering a proportionate share of the cost of the system from growth and development. And there's an understanding that whatever you don't recover from development, ultimately has to be paid for by the rate payers. And so the pie charts here kind of show an example of that, where the clean water facility was designed with capacity for growth. About 22% of the cost is attributable to growth. But existing customers have paid for 100% of that because the sewer STC was last updated before the clean water facility even hit the capital plant. So, there, there is no recovery of the cost associated with the clean water facility currently in the STCs. Just to provide a brief overview or refresher on the STC calculation methodology, we look at, what's the, what are the costs of the existing assets, and then what are the costs of the future capital projects? And then that total system cost, we divide by the number of equivalent residential units or ERUs that the system can serve. And then we get a cost per ERU, which is our STC. And so this table summarizes the calculations for the three utilities. And we can see for, for water, we're ending up with a maximum charge of $5,471 per ERU compared to the existing charge of $3,081 per ERU. For sewer, we're calculating a maximum charge of $9,200 compared to $1,680, which is the current charge. And then the storm drain, we're calculating a charge of $377 per ERU. And it's important to recognize, right now, the definitions of ERUs for water and sewer STCs, it's based on water meter size and the maximum continuous flow capacity of, of the various sized water meters. For the storm drain utility, the city code currently defines the ERU as 3,300 square feet of impervious surface area. All single-family parcels are assigned one ERU. And then the real differences come when you start looking at kind of the larger commercial types of, types of businesses that, that have a lot more impervious area. So that, that charge won't necessarily scale in the same way that, that the water and sewer charges will. Thought it was important to provide a, a table that actually shows what the charges look like. And sure, we're talking about $5,471 for, for the water STC, but then by the time you get to a four-inch meter, it's over $136,000. So, you know, for the larger connections, which in fairness, aren't all that common, these decisions do have a material dollar impact. And so this provides a survey of the STCs that apply to a 3/4 inch single-family meter. Right now, the city of Oak Harbor is at the bottom of the, the spectrum with a, a water charge of $3,081, a sewer charge of $1,680, and then no storm drain charge. And so, you know, the current total connection charge is $4,761. And this, this is only utility connection charges. This doesn't include other charges such as meter installation charges, impact fees for schools and fire and things like that. This is really just utility connection charges, STCs. And so with the maximum updated charges, the city would go from $4,761 per ERU to $15,048 per ERU. And that would put it sort of towards the, the upper middle of the range, notably still being about $5,000 below Anacortes as kind of the next local jurisdiction, comparable to Bremerton and Bainbridge Island and, you know, and even Mount Vernon. But these surveys, we put them together because they're, they're commonly asked for. But there are potentially differences in when the calculations were done. And you can see in the, the STC calculation here. I mean, right now, we're looking at the city of Oak Harbor, the current charge being updated in 2022. You've got, like Marysville, for example, you know, they haven't updated their charges in over 10 years. Burlington, they've got their sewer charge, they haven't updated since 2012. Storm drain charge recently was updated in 2020, but that's a, a pretty small portion of the total. And then the water STC is actually the one that is imposed by Skagit Public Utility District. So it's, it's not even theirs officially, but it is what a connection in that area would pay. And then kind of looking at some of the other ones, Bremerton, the storm drain charge was updated in 2019. 2014, the water sewer ones are a little bit more dated, but are, are likely to go up as those calculations are updated. So it's important to recognize that there's no requirement as to how often these charges are updated. So there's definitely room for variation based on that. There are also different methodologies, though. We, we looked into it, and, and most of these jurisdictions use a similar methodology to the one that we're using for the city. So, there's not a major difference there. But, you know, if we brought other utilities into this comparison, you know, that might be an issue. Another point to bring up is that, that kind of that left side column, the year the treatment plant was built. This is another thing to keep in mind, and that the, the cost of the existing system, and it includes the cost of documented assets. And if, you know, you've got utilities like, you know, Walla Walla, who, I mean, they built their wastewater treatment plant in 1928, and there have been some upgrades, but there's a fair amount that's been around for a while. And, you know, Mount Vernon, Marysville, we're looking at the 1950s, 60s, kind of like Bainbridge Island too. And then we go to Oak Harbor, and we look at the clean water facility, and, and it was built in 2018. And, you know, first of all, you could look at the cost of construction materials and kind of how that's increased over time. And then there's also the issue of regulatory standards. Definitely the city building the clean water facility based on the latest, greatest standards, where some of the other utilities may have done what they needed to, to comply with the standards, but, but not necessarily the same level of expense. And then also even the same scale of expense. I mean, the, you know, Oak Harbor system is going to be smaller than some of the ones that, that appear. Understanding, I tried to pick ones that were overall similar, so you're not going to see Seattle or anything on this list. But there is many things that, that can change, you know, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So, it's good to know that you're not completely out of the ballpark with what other utilities are doing. But you can only place so much value on, on these types of comparisons.
John, could we, could, could we interrupt you for a question?
Please.
Councilor Hoffmeyer.
Is this the, the time for input on this, this graph here, or would you like us to hold off?
If you have questions on this graph, I'd be happy to address them.
Have a couple of questions. I mean, more so observations, if you will. I, I respect the, the math. You know, I respect all the great work you guys have done for us this far and will, will continue to do for us. Oak Harbor is not Bainbridge Island. We are not Bremerton. You know, I, I could easily just dig in as a no on these STC changes. And I think, I think a majority of council could pretty easily coalesce around a no. But I, but I do think, you know, a moderate increase is needed. You know, I think, and I'm only speaking for myself, and I respect the fact that Marysville hasn't updated their rates in the last 10 years. But given the economic factors on the ground right now, you know, when I, when I would, during my campaign, I spoke with a lot of people. And I don't remember if quit raising my taxes, and I know this isn't a tax. I don't recall if quit raising my taxes, or we need more affordable housing came up more. I know that if we were to jump to these higher level numbers, we are doing nothing to help with affordable affordable housing whatsoever. So, if that ends up being a tiered approach, you know, if it ends up being, you know, we're comfortable with Marysville numbers maybe in 24 months, just thinking out loud, but I didn't want you to keep going further down the maximum price agreement if that isn't where the rest of us are at. So, not sure if this was the time for that input or not.
I think the next slide has some options to consider. That might be something to kick around.
All right, sure. Let's move on to that. So, recognizing that some of the initial feedback that we received last time was that the increase is high and steep, and there are concerns about the potential impact to affordable housing, we developed a few different phasing strategies. And these all end up going to the maximum justifiable charges. And that is something that could be changed by the council. You are not compelled to adopt the maximum justifiable charges. But again, sort of having to balance, if you don't, the ratepayers are going to have to pay the difference. And, you know, there's affordable housing, and then, there's also affordable utility bills, which is really part of the equation as well. In fact, more directly than the cost of the STC, because the houses are sold based on the market. And there's not necessarily a huge impact that STCs have on home prices. So, that's something to be aware of. But anyhow, we have three options that we presented here. The first one would be a full upfront implementation effective March 2023, and that would basically go from the $4,761 all the way to the $15,048 per ERU. And then, option two would be phasing it in over two years. And so, we basically said, let's do half the increase effective March 1st, '23, and we'll do the remainder in March of '24. And so, then, we go from $4,761 to $9,905 per ERU, and then, making the second step, March 1st of '24. And then, option three, the three-year phase-in, we basically spread it out over three years in equal steps. So, going from $4,761 to $8,191 to $11,621, and then, finally, the $15,048. Of course, by the time we get to March of '25, that $15,048 is likely going to be higher due to the fact that you're completing assets and projects and things, and adding them to the cost basis, as well as interest and whatnot accruing. And so, Mr. Goldman thought it was certainly worth pointing out, the ARPA funding, which is temporarily supporting the utility capital projects, is set to end by 12/31/24. So, definitely making sure that by 2025, you're getting that full cost recovery. The ARPA funding gives you some capital funds that you could use to phase in the increase, but ultimately, long-term, we'd like to recover the full cost of the system. And so, that is the end of the formal presentation, and I'm happy to come back to this slide and listen to any other thoughts or questions and respond as best I can.
Okay. I'm going to turn to council at this point, and we'll start with Counselor Wiesner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a lot to say here. All right. Yeah, lots of concerns, and I think I'm going to voice some concerns that some other folks on the council are going to agree with here. You know, Oak Harbor's not had some of the building booms that Anacortes and Burlington and et cetera have had. And obviously, you're absolutely right, it's market. The market drives not only the purchase of homes, but the market drives the constructions of homes. When there is a demand in the market, and the pricing works out, and the developer sees the opportunity, and it all pencils out, then it happens. And when it doesn't, it doesn't. And I look at STC charges from a few different standpoints. Yes, they're, and we can kind of see that Anacortes, right, saving up for their future sewage treatment plant. I mean, by through their STC charges, they're probably a little ahead of the game. They probably forecasted out the money that they're trying to build up in a fund, and have justified the STC charges through money going into that fund for the buildup of the replacement of a plant, rather than bonding it out and taking on the debt. But, you know, that train's already left the station for us, right? And so, now, we are in a mode where we've, you know, got to recoup some of this stuff that hasn't been done for a long time, but we don't need to be doing it on the backs of making it even harder and more expensive to develop in our community. And I think that's the concern we all have, right, is that we put these into play, and our community is going to even look less desirable to develop it. And, I mean, at $4,700, we're a bargain right now, and we've been a bargain for quite some time, and yet, we don't have the developers pounding our door down. And even if we did have developers pounding our door down, what programs do we have in place or are even talking about putting in place to incentivize those developers to build the type of housing that our community has been asking for? And I would agree with Councilmember Hoffmeyer that, you know, affordable housing has been a point of discussion, not only on a local level, but on a state level, a regional level, you know, a national level for quite some time. And, you know, other communities have come up with all sorts of great little incentives to do this. Some communities actually have funds built up, and they have, you know, help reimburse the developer for some of the development costs, you know, in affordable housing complex. We don't have that fund built up. But I see this as an opportunity to, you know, look at a progressive way to recoup and support the clean water facility, so it's not on the back of the ratepayers, but at the same time, provide incentive to the type of construction that I think our community is asking for. And so, here's what I'm going to propose, and, you know, I'm certainly willing to hear what the rest of council thinks about it, but I think we need to go back to the drawing table here, and we need to talk about system development charges with some tiering, and we can use the ERUs to tier it. You know, there's many ways we can do it, but the reality is, I think it's clear in our community that housing of a certain size, you know, duplexes, housing in certain price points, and I don't know how we get there, right, but to incentivize the construction of housing that is more affordable, and I know that's an oxymoronic term. What's affordable? Well, again, we have to sit down and work all through this, but this is working through my brain here. Housing that is affordable, housing that's going to be for the working-class families, housing that we've been kind of lacking in our community for quite some time, I think personally should be paying a lower system development charge than a, you know, 4,000-square-foot, three-quarter of a million-dollar home. And I think so from a few perspectives. One perspective is a $15,000 system development charge is not going to have near as big of an impact upon the overall cost and pricing of that three-quarter million-dollar home as it would on the construction of a $450,000 townhome. Percentage-wise, you know, every figure-wise, right, these costs will be passed on to the consumer, providing we get developers that actually come here and can make a pencil out. When we add $10,000 to the cost of a construction of a home, and a home can only sell for so much, that $10,000 is coming out of the builder's end of the cost. And if that $10,000 is the builder's profit, then why would the builder build here? So, these will have an impact upon house prices, because if we have builders coming here, building less affordable houses, then the housing becomes less affordable, because there's less of it, something we've just experienced for the last two years. Why did housing prices get out of control over the last two years? The island didn't change. The town didn't change. The number of people wanting to come here to buy the available homes that were out here changed, and thus, created less housing available. Less housing available made housing less affordable. I mean, I think we can all agree with most of those statements. So, by adding, you know, $10,000 to the cost of a 1,500-square-foot house that we're already struggling to get builders to come to the island to build, I think we're just getting further away. So, I would like to see a program in which we take that in consideration, and then, I would also like to see a program which we take in consideration what I think other cities around us have learned, and we're eventually going to learn, but infill and accessory dwelling unit housing is what's going to be the future. You know, we have multi-generational living going on. The, you know, the ways of our communities have changed, and with those ways of our communities, a part of our responsibility is to look ahead, that 15, 20, 25-year picture out. Where does our town need to be to be able to service the people who are living in the community? And part of that is understanding what's going on around us, and the county, and the state, and the country, and the region, and the world. And that is that more and more families are living together, and it's something that's happened in other countries for many years. And so, our new accessory dwelling ordinances, which are going to allow, you know, for some of that infill, to the building of more affordable-type construction, where you're building on an existing lot, and now, you don't have the lot cost involved. And from a system development charge, too, we don't have as much pressure on our system from those types of construction. We typically have infrastructure already in place. It's already serving a house on that property. We're typically talking a small house, because it's regulated through our ADU rules. We're typically talking, since it's a small house, we have less number of people living in it, putting less of an impact upon this infrastructure. And should those people be paying the same amount of money as somebody building a 4,000-square-foot house on a brand-new vacant lot? My thought is no. And that's the way we're going to provide, I guess, incentive that we don't have the funds for, like other communities, to help incentivize the developers who do want to come to our community to build the right type of housing in our community. So, that's what I would like to see happen. I'd like to see this kind of go back to the drawing board. I, you know, I don't know that I'm totally opposed with a $15,000 system development charge on a three-quarter of a million-dollar house, but I am adamantly opposed to a $15,000 system development charge on a $450,000 to $500,000 house. That's going to push us even further out of the market than we already are, and I think we're going to, like Councilmember Hoffmeyer says, we're not Bainbridge Island. We do have to understand where our place is here, and I know there's folks in the community who are going to say, no, no, no more housing, no more builders, no more development. And I get that, but again, honestly, smart development, the right type of development, the right type of construction is better than no construction at all, or the wrong type of construction, in my mind. And I think we have an opportunity to help drive that while we're having this discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Manz.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody talks about infill, but from different builders, I know, not as many as some of the council members. Infill, it's one lot, and the cost to put in the utilities there could be more expensive than if you have a lot where you can put in six homes or something. So, infill needs to be done, but sometimes, it doesn't work out. Part of the problem is, we live on an island. That's not going to change. And the materials come across a bridge, a narrow bridge, so they have to be careful. And when it freezes, I know when we had construction on a house by the high school, there were two weeks they couldn't get any supplies over. Burger King, McDonald's had to go out to the semis and bring in small trucks their supplies, because when the roads freeze, there's too much damage over vehicles that carry a certain amount of poundage. Doesn't happen all the time, but it does happen, usually at the worst possible time. But also, even on a wastewater treatment plant, Hoffman, Aller Subs, had trouble finding workers, laborers, because they started coming, and we had them, but as soon as Seattle or Bellevue or Bainbridge or wherever opened up, they disappeared, and we didn't have anyone to do the work, because we live on an island, and it's also hard to find someplace to throw your bedroll, I mean, you know, to pay. We don't have a lot of motels and stuff. And so, it kind of compounds it. Yes, we do. If anything, I could see a small fee right away for storm drain. But, that's about, I mean, we can't price out so no one starts building. And I had never thought about if it's an accessory dwelling pays the same price as a home that is, you know, $1.5 million for their utilities. So, I don't know how you can put that into a formula. I know different apartments or condos in town, they get one bill, and then, they divide it by the renters that are in there. Others, each one has their own meter, so I don't know how to solve that. I just know that it's hard to get the laborers here to get it built. It's just inconsistent. So, I just can't see at all that we would go automatically to the update. I was on council when we did a study rate, and none of the utilities had ever been raised, and people were squawking then, and that was back in '08. And so, we've come a long ways, and we've tried to have small increments, because I'd rather have small baby steps than suddenly saying, oh, wow, it's going to go up 10% next year. That's, everybody would be in shock. The police and fire department were making a lot of medical calls, so I don't know the real answer. I just, I can see this, I can understand it. It's logical, but I don't think it's logical for where we live on an island, even though we are the largest city. If we had a director, finance director, that went to task, and when, this was probably, Mayor, do you remember when Doug Merriman did that study about the mean income? For the state, it was $52,000. Here on the island, it was only like $34,050 bucks. That's a huge difference, and this was like 10, 15 years ago. We have not come up that far. And so, that's another thing that, I know you're a numbers guy, and you're doing this, but there are other extenuating circumstances or events that add to this. I mean, we're proud people, and we work hard, and I don't know how to solve it, but I will agree with other council members, we can't just go hog-wile, and it may take us more than five years. I know it doesn't help out our utilities place for keeping up maintenance and things like that, so I don't know. This is just, thank you for all your hard work, but there's a, is it the human side to it, the reality of the human side that are living here, that we must be very considerate of? Thank you.
Mayor Protim, nice.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with a tiered approach based on the, maybe the size or the value of the home, because, you know, if the charge is the same, whether you're trying to build something affordable, something, you know, under $400,000, or if you're building an $800,000 house, I think that there's some consideration needs to be made there, you know? I mean, construction and property development, it's an incredibly profitable industry. People wouldn't do it if they didn't make money, so I'm frankly not too concerned about the $15,000 charge on somebody that's going to be, you know, building an $800,000 house. So, the fact that, I do question what kind of an impact this will have, because, you know, Jim had a great point, the fact that the charge, the fees currently are a bargain, and yet, we don't have people breaking down our door. So, does that mean if we, I mean, if people are already not breaking down our door because the current system development charges are extremely inexpensive compared to surrounding communities, what kind of an impact would raising them necessarily have, if any? You know, there's clearly other factors at play. So, I think that, you know, as a city, it's our, as much as it would be nice to make things easier on, you know, on everybody that has a, you know, a role to play in the process of getting us housing, at the end of the day, our job is the process of getting us housing, at the end of the day, our job is to provide utilities and maintain our infrastructure, and we have to do, you know, whatever it takes to make that happen. But I don't think we should be unreasonable about it. I like the option of the three-year phase-in. I think that anything that we do needs to be phased in to make it, you know, more palatable, more realistic. And I would be curious to see what kind of options that the city would have available if we did a tiered approach based on the, the price and/or the square footage of new development. I don't know if that's something that we can do, but it's certainly something I would be interested in, in exploring, because I think that there is some potential there. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I'd, I'd like to point out is that it's continuously repeated that these numbers are based, our previous numbers are based on a 1996 calculation, but that was reviewed in 2014 and voted on, so realistically, they're 2014 numbers. So I just want to be clear about that. Second, I have to agree, you know, our entire community, the city, the county, everybody's been fighting for affordable housing, that's been a, a huge focus of multiple governments, and this is not going to help that situation. We're, we're seeing it in our world today, where we have price increases that are occurring, they're always passed to the consumer. The margin for the suppliers typically stay the same. So by putting this in place, you know, Mr. Gonzalez, you made a comment last time that, you know, it doesn't mean that it's going to increase the price of the house, but it might prevent the house from being built in the first place, which is a, a bigger problem. Also, we're, we're in economic turmoil in our country. People are paying more than anything to live right now, we have less homes available than we should have, and we're, we're going to throw additional costs on. Typically, you don't raise prices when things are the worst. You raise prices when things are going well and you have a lot of demand. We don't have really any demand right now, because we're not seeing that development occur. Numerous builders that I've spoken to, and, and I track the builders in town regularly, and I'm seeing that our builders are currently either stopping construction, not starting construction, or they're just not going to even plan a community here at all. So by us making this change in, in this five thousand percent increase is, is going to be, it's not going to be good for our, our community. No matter how you look at it, a hundred percent of zero, still zero. And in regards to tiering this based on the size of homes or the price of homes, also maybe the number of toilets, you know, the, the amount of sewer usage should come into play at some point. You know, you've got somebody that's got ten bathrooms in their house, and you've got, you know, sweet little Mrs. Smith with one restroom in her home, and she's still paying the same fees, that doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me either. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. Counselor Stuckey.
I love the comments and hearing from different perspectives other than my own. I came here with one idea, now my idea's switching a little bit, especially Councilmember Wiesner's. I, I like the idea, yeah. I mean, I was trying to find the Affordable Action Plan, or the housing plan that was done, but with the new website, I couldn't pull it up, it broke a link. But in that housing plan, there was talking about to make things more affordable, you know, reduced impact fees and things like that. I know this isn't exactly an impact fee, but I do like the idea of what can be determined affordable, having a reduced fee, and, you know, a multi-million dollar home having a higher fee. I mean, even the higher end fee, I, I don't think I personally have a problem with, as long as it's not affecting affordable housing. I also liked the, liked the idea of annexing. That could also be something to keep in mind, if we're annexing a home, what sort of fees would they pay? But I'd also like to hear from our, our Public Works Director. I mean, we're talking about maintenance and costs and things like that, and when we go to look at utility rates in a couple of years again, this will definitely come into play on what we're charging for hookups. So do you have any thoughts that you might be able to share with us? I know.
Councilmember Stuckey, could you just put a little more definition on that, so I can maybe understand?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I mean, as far as maintenance fees and things like that in the future, we're talking about bringing a certain amount of income based on raising SDCs. Do you have any idea of, do we need to, I mean, I'm assuming if you looked at this study, probably much more in-depth than we do. I mean, is your recommendation that we increase the fees to that level to keep up with maintenance, to keep utility rates more, more level? Or could we not increase it to this full amount and still not have a big increase on utility fees when that comes up?
Yeah, I've, I've really appreciated the dialogue I've heard tonight, and that's just, so what's going through my head now, right now, is an answer that would take about two hours to unravel.
You've got two minutes.
And I've got two seconds. Okay. So we're not going to do the two-hour question, but, so I'm going to be very brief. You're right, we, we have worked hard, and council has approved a, a utility reduction, right, at your last meeting, and this is good news, right, in some of the highest inflationary areas right now, right? We didn't, you didn't pop any champagne, but you should have popped some champagne, and congratulate yourselves. But I can tell you, to be very brief, that the long-term picture for Oak Harbor is very bad. You are in dire straits. You're going to face tremendous hurdles the way you're set up. And it is not going to be easy for the city, and we will have to have more discussions about that. But it's very clear to me, and I think of myself as maybe a doctor or your mechanic, you know, my job's to bring you the news that's going to make sure that you're as healthy as possible, and sometimes that's bringing news that's tough, right? And whether that's, hey, can you help me explain why I'm hearing that horrible squeak in my car? And I tell you, yeah, you need to replace your brakes, or you are going to have problems in about three months, and it's not going to be good. Or whether it's your doctor that has to, right? So I think we need to have that fuller discussion at a later date and figure out how to, I need to figure out how to bring that message and, and unravel that appropriately, because as I've talked to each of you, and again, one thing I've done is read the plans from 1990, 2000, 2010, and they all say the same thing. It's amazing, the community has seen this, if you want to call it, pending issue for a long time, and we just need to talk about it. So that's just going to leave a lot more questions, isn't it? And I didn't answer your question. But yes, there is a bigger issue than the current near-term years. There's a longer pending issue on infrastructure that's facing the nation, but is particularly facing Oak Harbor for a lot of the reasons that you, that you provided, and we, and the council's going to need to address those.
Counselor Hoffmeyer.
I, I think this council is, is fully aware of what the Public Works Director just said. I, I think that's why, I think that's why none of us popped any champagne corks, right? Not going to declare mission accomplished until it is. So, I mean, it does sound like there's a consensus among council that, you know, incentivizing infill, incentivizing affordable housing, you know, a tiered approach, you know, Counselor Evans mentioned maybe, maybe it being, you know, per the number of water closets. That's certainly a better idea than per the number of bedrooms, because then you end up with a, a den in every single house. You know, you, you see a lot of that in Admiral's Cove, for instance, every house there has a den that's actually a bedroom. So there, there's ways around it, you know, which takes me back to, you know, Counselor Wiesner mentioned, square footage. I don't remember if it was sixteen hundred foot, or if he just mentioned square footage, and I had a number in my head. It, it's pretty hard to have a workaround on livable square footage, you know, so, so maybe, maybe that's a, a way to build that number versus, you know, toilets, I'm not When it was said that, you know, the market's what drives the housing cost, very, very accurate. And that margin that the builders making on each of those houses, especially on infill, for instance, is, is pretty narrow. It, it really is, it's pretty narrow. And if, if you eat into that by ten thousand dollars, the developer might just say, "You know what? I'm not going to build here." There, there was a project that recently made it past the, the hearing examiner over on my side of town, I guess northwest side of town, for, I think, twenty-eight homes. And those would be pretty close to entry level, you know, those would be five hundred thousand dollar homes. Crazy to think that a half-million-dollar house is basically entry level. And I guess that, that, that really is to the depth of the problem. But at this higher level of SDCs, they would be forced to build, you know, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar homes to make it pencil out. And that, that's not really this individual's goal. Local person, and it's not even being done for the money, per se, it, nobody's going to do it to lose money. But the goal's to, to try to help out with the, the, the type of housing that's needed here in Oak Harbor. So I think it was Counselor Muntz that said she would support a, possibly support a storm drain charge right away. I would as well. When Counselor Heisen mentioned, you know, phasing in over thirty-six months, that, that's where I would be, it would have to be phased in over thirty-six months, and I, at least on that, you know, that eighteen hundred square foot or less, or, or whatever square foot that is, I would not be comfortable going past the Marysville number on that size of a home. If it's a million-dollar house, maybe the fifteen thousand's okay. So I, 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 I hope that's enough for staff to, to work on bringing something back to council.
Counselor Evans.
Actually, if I could just, sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, you know, Chris and John Giriducci over at the, over at FCS would, would be able to look into all the items that were brought forward, whether it be square footage, price points, size of lots, you know, toilets. You know, they've done these kind of studies for hundreds of different communities in their Redmond office, and they might be able to come back at another workshop and bring some more information to the council to consider. Is, do you have anything to add, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, one thing I, I will clarify right now is price cannot have anything to do with it. I mean, really what this comes down to is we're covering a share of the cost of the system based on the impacts that the property is having to the system. So, you know, the whole link between square footage is presumably that a, a larger square footage home uses more water and puts greater potential or expected impacts on the system. The, the fact that a, a house costs eight hundred thousand, or a million, or fifty million, like, that is not within the realm of what you can impose system development charges on. So just be clear about that. As far as the other things go, I mean, we could certainly try to look into that stuff, but I, I think the big challenge is having that data available. I mean, understanding, like, well, what's the inventory of houses, and what's the square footage? I mean, it, it's something we can do if we have data, but, and, but then it also becomes something, you know, more for, for a city to track. And if it's not something that can be done practically, then, then that raises the question. I mean, the other thing that you can do is, by policy, impose a charge that's less than the maximum. And, you know, if I go back to this, this survey here, Walalala did exactly that. I mean, I, I calculated charges last year, and I think they were around seven or eight thousand dollars per ERU for each utility, and they said, "We just want to do it at this level, because that's what we think our community can bear." So, so it's important to recognize that, you know, we, we could go down this road, and depending on the information's available, we could come back with something. I, I do know, you know, there are some utilities such as King County that recently reevaluated how they impose their, their SDC equivalent on, on development, and originally, they were doing, you know, one ERU per household. And, and now there are different thresholds, like if you're, you know, below a certain size, you get point eight ERUs per, per house. And, you know, if you're within a certain range, you're assigned one, and then if you're above that, you're assigned more than one. So that could also be an option. But again, it sort of comes down to, you know, what information is available, and, and to what degree do we want something tailored to Oak Harbor versus something that is just based on what someone else did?
Counselor Evans, did you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that has bothered me quite a bit since I got elected to council was, you know, on a national level, state level, and even a local level, it feels like our local governments forget where this money comes from. You know, there, there was a comment made that, you know, the one percent property tax increase, it's just a commonplace process, we just do it. I, I think that's ridiculous. We really have to look at where this money's coming from. This is coming from our citizens, our bosses, the people that are, are living here and paying the taxes. And our sewer plant was not built to budget, I believe we went just a hair over, and now we're looking at that saying, "Well, we got to find somebody to pay for it, so let's get the guys that are trying to help us with our housing problem." That doesn't make sense to me either. And, you know, in our last city council meeting, I believe it was, we, we had our, our rate reduction. That, that was awesome. And one of the questions that was asked was, are the SDC increases calculated into this? No, they were not. Are we going to have a huge increase coming in the future? And then our Public Works Director tells us that we're in dire straits, and, and we need a two-hour conversation. I don't even know that I feel comfortable in making a decision about this at all until I hear that two-hour conversation. But then on top of that, with the economic situation of our world right now, I don't know that I'm even wanting to look at this until next year. You know, let, let our world get in place, let the people be able to buy their bread and their milk, and hopefully build some homes for these people before we start ripping more money out of their pockets. So I, I'm concerned with where we're at and the mentality of, of where we get this money. It's not free, people are working for it, and we got to remember that. Thank you.
Counselor Hoffmeyer.
I think I'll let Counselor Evans have the quote of the day, "Let the people be able to buy their bread and their milk." Pretty accurate, though. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I just can't help but weigh in here, just a little bit. I was on the council when we last discussed this, and I think, I think Mr. Evans mentioned 2014. And, and if, and if you'll go, if you'll go back one slide to that SDC survey, single-family meter comparison with the other cities, as a counselor at that time, whether it was 2014 or even, we were looking at numbers at exactly this question, and I got, I was convinced that it was the wrong thing to do, to, to raise SDC rates. I was convinced that we, that it would deter building. And in fact, I was convinced that if we kept those rates down, we would have more development and we would have more building. We haven't. We haven't. It hasn't happened. So as I look at this schedule, I can tell you, and I'm not sure whether Mr. Schuler, he and I have talked about this a little bit more extensively, I haven't gotten the full two hours from him yet, but we're behind, we are behind the eight ball, and this probably shows it better than anything. We have not done anything. When you look at, we are on the bottom of this list, and we are half of Burlington. And I guess my point is, my only point is, we have not done anything, and so even if the, I don't, I'm not convinced that this will keep builders from coming to Oak Harbor if and when that time is right. I, I don't think it's kept them out of Oak Harbor. It certainly has not brought them in, and they're certainly not panning a lot of nails because these rates are lower. So I guess if nothing else, it would seem to me like we should be increasing them some, not just storm drain. I mean, you know, Anacortes sells the same water that we do. Their, their fee is, and, and again, you know, Anacortes has had a lot of building over there. So it, those fees, I don't know how long, looks like a year calculated, 2019, it's only been a few years ago. But, you know, Mr. Evans talked about 2014, that's been eight years ago. We haven't done anything. We have not done anything, these rates. So, gosh, let's not do nothing again, please. And, and, and you guys are talking, concerned about only a, a storm drain increase, it's not going to get us out of the dire straits, I don't think that Mr. Schuler is concerned about. And I'm not saying that I'm all for going to fifteen thousand forty-eight dollars either. I'm not saying that. But there's a lot of area in between fifteen thousand and four thousand seven hundred and sixty-one. sixty-one, which is only half of Burlington's, which is the next one on this list. There are a lot of room there. So, I, I just wanna, that's my two cents. Um, and, you know, I think each one of water, sewer, and storm drain deserve to be looked at and potentially increased. Uh, if it's not to this degree, I think, uh, I think it could easily be sold. I, I, I can certainly remember that when staff listened to the council that was so concerned, and I was one of them, I don't even think that staff bought into not doing anything. But we didn't do anything. Still haven't. Uh, Counselor Muns?
Thank you. I'm sure you'll remember when in oh-eight, when it was four new council members and a new mayor, we found out there were twenty-two projects in Public Works that had been kicked down the road for years because council didn't wanna be blamed for spending money or raising rates. We're the mom and the dad, and as much as we don't want to, the mayor's right, we do need to take more action than just, I don't know what that is or what it looks like. I will agree that fifteen thousand is a bit high, but when you kind of look at the list, I mean, yeah, we're half of Burlington. Um, if maybe the builders aren't building, it isn't because of the rate, it's because they don't see the support when they put in the infrastructure. I don't know. I have no idea. Somehow, we have to balance this, but we're elected, do the best you can for your term of four years, and if they like it, they'll reelect you, or you may say, "Ah, this is too hard. I don't want any more part of this." Why I've stuck around for so long? I don't know. I just felt like I could make a difference. Um, and I've tried to very, very hard. But hearing what the mayor said, I don't wanna be a council that kick the can constantly down the road. Public Works was at their last ends because the council never did anything. They wouldn't put money into anything, they just wanted to be status quo, and we can't live like the town did thirty years ago. So, the buck stops here. We need to do something, and doing nothing is not the answer as much as when I look at Barbara and her heart pours out to us, I understand that. I have been there where I had to make things work on five hundred dollars a month, and it was not easy. We had a lot of pinto beans and rice, and that was it. Water, ice water. So, um, been there, done that, hope I don't have to go back there, but I hate to see someone else go through that. But we can't do nothing, or else everything will completely fall apart. You think about the maintenance you can put off on your house, and you can do it for so long until there's an emergency, and then you can't. Well, it looks like the emergency's been there, we just have closed our eyes to see it. So, thank you.
Counselor Hoffmeyer, I think that is the end of it.
I just wanted to take, take a second to concur with a lot of what, uh, Counselor Muns said, and, you know, it, it, if, if you'll remember, I think my first comment was, you know, I, I don't, I don't wanna have to dig in as a no on this. So I guess, uh, question would be for, uh, Mr. Goldman. Uh, is there enough of a consensus from council here? Do you feel you have a good direction? Do you, do you need some type of numbers out of us beforehand, et cetera?
Um, thank you for that question. I think, just based on what I'm hearing, um, I think we can give direction to our consultant to take a closer look at perhaps the differential ERU situation that was brought up by a few different council members. Some, I mean, Councilmember Weisner was the, you know, first one to bring it up, and a few other council members, um, seemed like they were coming up with ideas regarding that, too. Also, Mayor Protem Heisen mentioned that, you know, before we moved forward, she'd like, she'd be curious or interested in to see what the research would show. So, I don't think it would hurt, um, to ask them to do a little bit more research to see, um, what other places are doing. I mean, perhaps if we do it by, we can't look at price, we learned, so we can look at square footage, um, or different things. As long as the data's available, Island County Property Appraiser has a lot of data, we can kinda see what we can get there. And of course, when developers come in to build housing and, and non-residential space, we can, you know, we can see what data we collect at the time and see if we can bolster our data collection systems to bring up more data going forward, and see what data we currently have in our systems. But that might be something we can take a look at. Perhaps, um, smaller square footage type of unit, or a townhouse type of unit, or an ADU type of unit would have a lower ERU, um, charge, and that would be a, instead of one, whatever, we, you know, the council eventually sets for the ERUs, perhaps this different type of use would be point-eight. So it would be, you know, twenty percent less than a full ERU, whatever the ERU ends up being set at in the future. That might be something to, to, to explore and come back to city council and see what, see what the, the will of the council is for us to move forward. If that sounds, that sounds like something, uh, the council desires, well, that's the way we'll go.
Thank, thank you, David. I, I appreciate that. Uh, you know, uh, for myself, it would have to probably be phased in over thirty-six months, and, you know, it, at least for that standard, you know, entry-level family home, you know, eighteen-hundred square feet or less, I really wouldn't be comfortable going past that Marysville number. Again, if you're talking thirty-six hundred square feet for a home, maybe it's a different story there. Uh, and then, uh, again, i- i- if there were a way to incentivize infill and affordability, uh, such as, I, I think the, uh, I think the city of Oak Harbor already waives, uh, system development charges for Habitat, for instance. So maybe there would be a way to similar, similarly apply that to some other things as well. But, uh, thank, thank you for all you've done so far.
Counselor Weisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I certainly agree with, uh, Councilmember Muns. You know, we're, we're, we're not asked to sit up here to do nothing, right? We're, we're up here to do, do stuff. And, and sometimes, of course, the fear of making a really tough decision freezes everybody, and, and nothing happens. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're making a purposeful decision, right? And, and, and the purpose doesn't need to be because we need it, or because we have to, or because we want it, right? Because obviously, those are all purposes that we, we see a lot in, in what we're doing. We, we need to do this, or we have to do this, and sometimes it is we have, that we want to do this. But, um, here we have the opportunity to be very purposeful with, with this decision. We're not going to be making this decision just because other communities around us have done it. Um, and, and we're not gonna be making this decision because, uh, we think it's gonna solve all of our woes because we, we, we realize, even if that figure was probably thirty thousand dollars, it's not gonna solve all of our woes. Uh, there has to be some moderation here, and, and, and we have to understand, uh, the difference between needs, desires, and wants. So I just think we have an opportunity here to be purposeful with this, uh, decision, um, that, that we can accomplish, uh, you know, a move in the right direction to, to, to stabilize, uh, uh, this infrastructure and, you know, the, both the water and the sewer and the storm drain, and, and be conscious of, of, uh, the, the building community, be conscious of the, the needs of our community, and, uh, at the same time, drive something that we've been talking about. And, and, uh, Councilmember Stuckey's right, there are several, uh, uh, points of the Affordable Housing Task Force was to come up with either ways to incentivize affordable housing, or find, uh, ways to cut development charges, uh, for affordable housing. Um, so here's our opportunity to, to, again, take one more thing off of that list and, and, and try to move it forward while being very purposeful in, in understanding, uh, the, the tough decision we're about to, to make, um, and at the same time, uh, make a decision and, 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 and not just do nothing, right? So, so I, I, you know, from my perspective, I think you've nailed it on the head, David. I'd like to hear more about how other communities have, have tackled this and, and used this as a, a driver towards, uh, the type of construction they need in their community while, uh, you know, putting aside the, the money that's needed to, to, uh, cover some of the cost of, uh, uh, infrastructure, uh, development without putting that on the back of the ratepayers. Thanks.
Seeing no other input, then we will move on. Thank you, council. Good discussion. Move on to, uh, the section on the agenda, Administration, City of Oak Harbor Financial Primer Part Two, Finance Director, David Goldman.
Do y'all need a break, like a five-minute break?
If you'd like a five-minute, yes, we'll take a five-minute break. Be back at four oh-five. So I, I would like to, uh, call the meeting back to order. Uh, this is a Oak Harbor City Council Workshop, September twenty-eighth. We took a short break. It is four oh-seven, and we are on, uh, item, uh, the City of Oak Harbor Financial Primer Part Two with our finance director, Mr. David Goldman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the Financial Primer Part Two, Expenses. So I hope everybody's ready to hear me talk again, 'cause, um, nah, I wasn't gonna make a dumb joke, I'm not doing it. But anyhow, um, the first two sections of the Primer, Part One and Part, Part One A and Part One B, were about revenues, and this item is about the expenses that go into, um, our budget and where we charge all of our, um, all of our costs to. So with that, let's move on. So the major expense categories that you'll find are personnel, that includes employee wages and benefits, operating and maintenance, those are costs associated with city operations such as supplies, fuel, professional services, and so on. Um, you have capital outlay, that includes the capitalizable cost of projects, and other items, too, that aren't part of projects but are smaller type of things, like, uh, smaller equipment and furniture, and also transfers between funds. So looking at all the funds in the past three years of actual results, you can see how it looks in the different categories. Um, there's personnel, there is operating and maintenance, there is your capital outlay, and transfers between funds. The blue is two thousand nineteen, the orange is two thousand twenty, and the gray on the right is two thousand twenty-one. This is what this looks like for two thousand twenty-one. Um, for all of our funds, that's general fund and all of our utility funds and everything together, um, about sixty percent of all of our expenses were operating and maintenance, and debt services in there, too. Um, twenty-eight percent were personnel, and that'll vary by fund. Um, twelve percent were transfers, and one percent was capital outlay. So with the general fund expenses, you can see that personnel is the largest portion of general fund. Um, operating and maintenance is down here, capital outlay is over here, and transfers is down there. And looking at the two thousand twenty-one results, you can see three-quarters of the general fund is personnel, and the other three, sorry, two-thirds is personnel, and the other third or so is transfers, capital outlay, and, um, operating and maintenance. The streets, arterials, and TBD funds, that's funds one oh-one through one oh-eight, with the exception of one oh-five and one oh-six, you can see that those are more operating and maintenance weighted because there's a lot of street construction on that. Here's the construction, and here's the operating maintenance that goes along with that construction, also maintaining our streets and roads throughout the city. And you'll see transfers to, those are mostly transfers from the operating accounts to the construction accounts. And for two thousand twenty-one, that's what that looks like.
David? David? Excuse me a second. Why the big difference between, um, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one?
Oh, there was, um, there were just large capital outlay expenses for that particular year. Um, I don't know the projects off the top of my head, maybe, um...
Well, I'm also, we're also down in operating and maintenance.
Over here. Yeah, I can look at my, let me look at my spreadsheet here. Is this the one? Yeah, all right.
And, and just so you know the reason behind my request is, one of the things we promised to the community when we, we went out with the TBD and, and asked for their support about it was that we were not going to peel back the existing dollars we were spending on street maintenance, that we were not going to take the money that we had already budgeted from year to year for street maintenance, take that, divert that someplace else, and then just rely upon the TBD. We, we told them that the TBD would be above and beyond, uh, the, the maintenance we're already doing on the streets, and I wanna make sure we're keeping that promise.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that hasn't, no, no, that hasn't happened. That hasn't happened. I mean, I could get you that answer. I have, I have the chart here, but it just doesn't seem to wanna work for you right now.
Yeah, if you could just send me a follow-up, follow-up email with that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Would you send all of that, please, David?
Oh, yeah, yeah, not a problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Streets, fund, arterial, all right, excellent. And there's the two thousand twenty-one breakdown. Um, senior services, you can see, um, for the, for these years, and these years do also include the COVID years, you can see that personnel expenses are, um, over here. Operating and maintenance had decreased due to closures. Capital outlay, there was a capital outlay in two thousand nineteen, but there was nothing in twenty and twenty-one. And, um, transfer expenses are mostly for that local loan for street lighting, or for lighting in the parking lot or whatnot, that certain funds have to pay into the debt service fund. It's, it's a small amount. Um, you can see for senior services, you have sixteen percent for personnel, and about thirty-one percent for operating and maintenance for two thousand twenty-one. Water fund expenses, so you can see, um, the same trends. Personnel is a small percentage of all the costs, the operating and maintenance is the largest portion. You have capital outlay, depending on the projects that are programmed in that year, and you have, um, transfers as well. That's mostly transfers, um, from the water fund to, um, the construction fund. And there you can see, uh, for two thousand twenty-one, operating and maintenance largest percentage, and the other percentages are located on the left. For the sewer funds, it's a similar picture, except the operating and maintenance is larger. Seven million dollars of this, at least for twenty-one, was for debt service. The debt, the debt service was a lower amount in two thousand nineteen as it was phased into the current seven point oh-five million dollars it is a year, um, in twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three and so on. There were capital outlay projects in two thousand nineteen, that was the last year of major construction on the Clean Water Facility, so transfers between funds and then capital outlay expenses. And there's the pie chart for two thousand twenty-one. So solid waste fund expenses, um, similar picture, different numbers, operating maintenance is here, personnel's there, and you have, um, some transfers as well. And there's the pie chart. Storm drain fund expenses, so there's your operating and maintenance, personnel, transfers, and the capital outlay. And there's the pie chart for twenty-one. And you have the Marina Fund, which is the operating fund and the capital fund and the reserve fund. Um, there's the personnel, there's your operating and maintenance. Uh, this includes, you know, cost of fuel, and all the other services are provided to, um, the folks who use the Marina. Capital outlay, also debt services in here, too. You have capital outlay, and you have also transfers. And there's the pie chart for that, for twenty-one. Then here are the five internal service funds that we can keep. Here are the expenses related to those. Here's the personnel. Um, personnel's all located in Fund Five Oh-One and Five Ten. Five Oh-One is the vehicle repair, oh, sorry. Oh, that's the vehicle repair fund, and Five Ten is the Public Works Administration, engineering, and a few other, um, a few other items in there. And you had a large transfer in two thousand nineteen for a project, and the operating and maintenance cost and capital outlay. And there's the pie chart for two thousand twenty-one. And here are some details on different types of expenses. So for all fund, oh, if you're hearing something, all right, so for the, um, personnel, for the personnel expenses, you have, um, the salaries... you have the salaries, or wages basically, that includes the salaries and overtime. And this is, and, and that's this portion here, the $11.9 million is the wages portion, and the 23% is on the next slide, that's the benefit portion. And this is a little bit more detailed than the other slide. This line here, where it says Personal Benefits, those are the costs of the personal benefits that employees get, such as healthcare, dental care, and also, even though this one says Pension, the costs that we pay into the state pension are over here. This row is really a non-cash type expense we have to report for the financials. This row consists of our share of the state pension funds. There's a proportional share that we have to follow per generally accepted accounting principles, and we have to record those pension assets on our books. Every city and every county and everybody in the state pension has to do that. And in addition, we also have other post-employment benefit information that we have to record there as well. This went up dramatically in '21 compared to '20, based on the rate of return that the state received. You can see that in '21, for their various pension funds, the rate of return was pretty dramatic compared to '20 and '19 and previous years. And we do record this as a negative amount, even though it's an asset. So that's just an accounting principle we have to do for the financials. But it's not cash, it's not anything that really affects our cash balances. So Operating and Maintenance has a number of different categories, which I broke down so we can go over them. So for Communications, you can see that the total for these years is about $600,000. It went up in 2021 due to ICOM cost increases. You can see, no, those are mostly found in the police lines and also the fire lines as well. The other funds just have, you know, just, just the costs were more or less in line with, with trend for the other funds. Debt Service. So in 2011, there was the dredging bond that was taken out for the Marina. That was refunded with a 2021 bond. So the, the new bond that was taken out in '21 will mature in 2025. So you'll see that the actual Debt Service expenses for the Marina will be higher than these numbers in the next four years, but then it will be paid off. And then we'll be looking at, you know, possibly a new, a new dredging bond, depending on the direction we're going with the study and everything else we've talked about in the past. On the miscellaneous is for the 2016 lighting upgrade. That's the local loan, and that matures in 2025. That, that's paid off by about five different funds, a few different areas of the city. It's about $60,000 a year. In Sewer, that is the Clean Water Facility debt. The bond matures in 2046, and the state revolving loan funds mature in 2036 to 2038. And you can see what the actual expenses were here in that sewer line. And Storm Drain, you'll notice there's a Public Works Trust Fund Loan that matures in 2031. And Water, there's also a Public Works Trust Fund Loan that matures in '25 and '26. So more Operating and Maintenance, you have the depreciation and AROs. So these are another, one of those non-cash expenses. This is a generally accepted accounting principle, mandatory expense. Depreciation, those are only required in our proprietary funds, which means Fund, the Utility Fund and the Marina Fund. It's a non-cash expense. And, and the ARO or Asset Retirement Obligations, it's another mandatory non-cash expense. This applies to water wells that are no longer used or needed, and have reached the end of their service's full life, and they're required by law to be decommissioned. Marina Timber Barges, there's some timber barges that were identified for retirement by the DNR, in the DNR lease with the City Marina. And the estimated costs associated with these are amortized over the useful life, and are accounted for in the financials, although these have no cash impact. They are, they have to be accounted for in our financial reporting. Next up is Insurance. We obtain our insurance through the Washington City's Insurance Authority. We have Auto, Boiler, Property, Crime, and Liability. And the insurance costs are depending on type and the schedules that are used, such as the number of vehicles we have, our property schedule, number of employees, the size of the budget, and so on. And these were the total cost of the WCIA for these years.
Dave, could I ask one question?
Sure.
I know you, I could tell that you are wondering why I didn't ask you when we met yesterday. Everything else.
Oh, those are all the other funds? What I did was, I, I looked through, like I have a listing of how all the funds were impacted by this particular expense, and it's like 30 deep, and it would not fit in the slide. So I looked at the largest impacts. So I noticed the largest number was General Government, another large hit was Sewer. All the other utilities I added up and put there. The Internal Service Funds were there. And then everything else is all the other funds.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of what I, what I did, so it would fit on the slide.
It's literally everything except the four above it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, you'd see like $200, $20,000, $1,500, you know.
Yeah, thanks for not, thanks for not showing us all that.
All right. So Interfund Charges, these are allocated to the above funds by State Auditor Office- reviewed formulas. So these are the expenses associated with Interfund Charges. You can see that the total is about $8 million a year, and this is how it impacts the different, different funds. The next slide, I think, I put, I put how, how, how it, 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 it works, like, like where these funds are going towards. So these are the charges for the different funds that we have, and this is the reason for the charges. And I pulled, for example, the Reserve for Replacements together. So we have a Vehicle and Equipment Reserve for Replacement, we have a Facility Reserve for Replacement, and a Technology Reserve for Replacement Internal Service Fund. I added those together, and it makes up about 24% of the 2001 column. The General Fund is this one, this IDCA, the Indirect Cost Allocation. That percentage amounts to about 3.9 or 3.85 or something percent of all the expenses, I mean, all the funds. And that is, that's about 29% of all the Interfund Charges. And 47% are the, are the other funds, are Public Works Motor Pool, Fund 510, and the, sorry, 501, and the four components of Fund 510. You have the Shop Operations, you have Engineering, you have the Supervisory Salary, and the Public Works Labor Pool. And also, we have this various funds, there's Public Works Labor. It's, it's, it's a smaller amount than the others, and it's just based on the usage of certain public funds labor, and how it just charges out to various funds. Those together are about, to about 47% of all the charges. So Items Purchased for Resale include the Cost of Water from Anacortes, parts and supplies from the vehicle repair, for vehicle repair in the shop, you know, fuel, propane, ice, so on, for the Marina, and supplies for Development Services and Streets. So you can see how they're broken down in the different component parts over here. Water is really the Cost of Anacortes, it's the largest one in this row here, about 1.9 or so. This, 2020 was a little lower, but about 1.9 million a year for that. So Leases and Rentals. Includes leases for printers and photocopiers, portables, motorized equipment, and power tools. And also, the Marina is leased with the Washington State DNR. And this is how they're broken down among the different funds. It's a smaller amount than some of the other things we looked at, so I was able to put in some of the smaller numbers here for context purposes. So these are general operating and maintenance costs. These are not specifically categorized elsewhere. So this is, this would include stuff like office supplies, janitorial supplies, general operating supplies, salt tools and equipment, like LTAC, grantee dispersments, elections expenses, just a various catch-all for miscellaneous expenses. And this is how, these were broken out among the different funds for those costs. So Professional Services are all the contracts, the various contracts the city has entered into. For the General Fund, bills amounts are mostly comprised of legal expenses, court expenses, and public safety and jail, which, which has increased, the jail cost has increased over the past few years. But you can see how it's broken down in all the, all the different funds here. So Public Utility Services, that includes the cost for city utilities and other public utilities. So it's basically, for example, how much, in the General Fund, you'd have how much, for example, Parks pays for, you know, the water, the water bill, or for the electric bill, or the propane or gas bill, and so on. And, and this is how it's categorized in the different, different funds over here. You know, solid waste is kind of high because, because it includes the cost of dumpsters and the tipping fees we pay to Island County, and that's categorized in the bars manual as a public utility service, not just a professional service, so it has to go in this area. These are taxes, that include sales taxes and excise taxes, are admitted to the state. And for Utility Funds, includes the city's utility taxes that are collected by our customers and then sent over to either the General Fund or the, what do you call it? Or the, or the Arts Fund, there's a small amount that goes to the Arts Fund as well. Yeah, and also there'd be, you know, many other taxes that they have to pay as well with the state. So that's broken out. These are travel expenses pertaining to work-related conferences, seminars, and training. You can see that when COVID came, those dropped off pretty dramatically. You know, we expect, I mean, those have already picked up in 2022 as more and more trainings and conferences have become in-person. And those will likely, you know, barring anything catastrophic happening in '23, you know, those, those, those might pick up to more normal levels, but they might not, you know. There are still a lot of organizations that have virtual type of trainings and conferences, and we may not go back to that level in 2019 and '18 and so on. So, you know, we'll see, we'll see how that, that pans out. And then here's all the capital stuff, including, you know, anything that's capitalizable that we have to report in our financials. For example, major projects, you know, land buildings, improvements, machinery, vehicles, and smaller items like furniture, maybe smaller equipment, that might not meet threshold for, you know, a capital project, but we still have to track as an asset and report in our financials. And these are also Transfers Between Funds, and those are typically done for capital projects and debt service. And, you know, we do have a transfer from the General Fund to the Senior Services Fund and, and, you know, stuff like that. So that's what that looks like for the different funds. And, and that's, that's, that's it for Part Two. We got through Part Two, and we'll be coming up with new Primers to go over different, act in different areas of what we do here in finance, and how that affects citizens, you know, and the city as a whole. But we're thinking we might hold off and do in the next Primer until after our audit's done, and also after the budget process is completed in December. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Hoffmeyer.
Not, not a question, just an observation. You, you have a very amazing way of simplifying something that is so nuanced, if you will. So, thank you. I, you would think that these, you would think that these would be like watching paint dry, but they're, they're actually very informational, you do a very good job. Thank you.
Yeah, but sometimes I slip up. I think in the last presentation, you know, I looked back at the last 14 years of property taxes, and we have raised, you know, to that 1% level of, you know, every year. There's sometimes, you know, the implicit price deflator, or the state's inflation factor, has been under 1%. But we've passed a resolution to go to that full 1%. Part of the reasoning is, I think, I heard from the counsel last time, or time before that, is because when inflation's at higher than 1%, which I'm pretty sure when we get the numbers next week from the state, where it's going to be higher than 1%, you know, cities and counties are still limited to that 1%. So I think I may have said customary at the last, last, I didn't really mean customary. I just, I just look past, look at the past 14 years, and it's just, it was, it was done every time. So, you know, I, you know, so I'm trying to make it simple, but sometimes I, maybe I use the wrong word. I, you know, apologize for that. But, but thank you, thank you, Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goldman. Appreciate that. We will now go to item number B under Administration, City Administrator's Report. Turn to Mr. Oborn.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to give my report again. For the camera here, I'm Blaine Oborn, Oak Harbor City Administrator, and giving my monthly report here. I'm just going to touch on the highlights here, a few items, going to jump around and take questions at the end. One thing we want to focus on is the 1081 Pioneer Way Property Purchase. We're working with the Public Works Directors, taking the lead on running the environmental, which I appreciate, and then also working with our Grants Coordinator on some potential Brownsville Grants for that project there. So another one I want to highlight there, down a little further, is assisting council members on the council goals. And I've got all the goals in, so I'm going to put, target that for the October 4th meeting and reveal the top 10. So, so there. So more discussion to come on that one. I wanted you aware of that there's, further down, that there's meetings going on with Snow Isle Library and Skagit Valley College regarding the divestiture of the city's ownership of the Oak Harbor Library. The idea is to let Snow Isle take that asset or that liability on. So I think it's highly beneficial on the city, so we'll pursue, pursue that option. And if we get some tangible options, we'll bring it to the council on that. Also, I want you to aware of, there's some meetings that I'm taking place on regarding the airport with Island County and the Port of Coopville. I think if the council wants to desire that purchase to continue, then I think the city needs to step in and take an active role, and more discussion will come on that. Moving on to Human Resources there, through the page 85, or 6, yeah, 85. There are interviews are coming up for the Parks and Recreation Director, the final, we did two already, and we're doing the final third round in-house. So I think five of the eight council members, or seven council members, or I gotta do my math there, four of the seven council members, getting tired here, have signed up. I think three more need to sign up, so please answer your emails. There's invitations sent out by the HR Director to get in the schedule on, on Friday afternoon. So it really would be great to have all seven council members participate in a, in a 15-minute meeting with the two top finalists there. So moving on, on the Boatyard Purchase, I know that's been on there for a while. We extended that grant, but we made some positive progress on that. So it should be moving along, so. Moving on to the Police Department, certainly we all know that they've been busy responding to severe, several major incidents, so we appreciate their efforts there. Moving on to Public Works, Public Works is working on the, with coordination with the Police Department on the Ask for Traffic Calming Presentation. And I just talked to our engine, city engineer, so he believes it's targeted for the October meeting. There's both months in there, just in case it slips, but I think there's a good possibility we'll have that on the October workshop for discussion there. A few other items further in the report there is the, in Development Services is the LAMA Reports. And you can get that report online. It's pretty easy to go simple on there and see what developments are going on and drill down. So it's open to the general public, not just the council members. So we've gotten a lot more open-ended about that, about what projects we're approving. And so anybody in the community, or anybody with access to the World Wide Web, can go online and, and see what access, and access the online reporting that's available there. Then also, the new city, city website has launched. So we're now at oakharbor.gov, as opposed to org. to org. So great development there. I appreciate Sabrina Combs and staff really coordinated effort there in really upping the game there and really implementing a very useful and very thoughtful and very robust website, so great effort there. And then economic development specialist position is being considered for, on the upcoming October 4th council meeting here. I'm just going to put out a plug there that potential projects with the land purchase that we're talking about and possible intervention with the airport, that position would very, be very helpful. With that, no other comments, but I'll take questions.
Any questions here? Yes, Counselor Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. On, you mentioned that the city has joined the Northwest Women's Academy. Was there a fee to do that or just for participating in it? I believe Sabrina has, Combs has been accepted to that academy?
Yeah, there is a fee. I think it's well worth it. It's a great program, and it's within our budget, so I've approved it.
Okay, good. I just, it wasn't in there. And then one more question. It was addressing and testing economic payments. Where were the, I mean, electronic payments? What was that for? Is that in the utility department? It was in your report. I just wanted some more explanation.
David, can you speak to that, Goldman?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I'll get with you at another time.
Electronic reports, okay. We'll write that down and follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Stuckey.
The short version, I'm going to specify that. It looks like you went to a conference, and I see some brief notes from the conference. Could you expand a little bit? Just curious, with the governing and disruptive environment, the two things that was interesting is the sentence that says, "Was politically acceptable and was operationally sustainable", and also, "Bad guys learn social media before we do." Do you remember a little bit from the conference?
I remember the bad guys conference on it. There was talking about some real challenges we have, and, and people, and some of the things that was, this is colleagues kind of going together that are kind of reminiscing together there. So they felt like that sometimes people write the negative before the positive could come out, and that's been the challenge it has. And, and we, you know, there was allusion to this earlier about how some things are always negative on, on, online there, and how do we kind of be proactive on that? So certainly there's a proactive. And then we've been in the environment where the old days, they had 24 hours to respond. We got to respond instantly, and that's a challenge for us, and we're on board and we're doing it. But it's certainly a challenge, and so just a real intellectual academic way of kind of sitting back and kind of dealing with all the challenges, but figure out valuable solutions, and that's kind of where it was oriented at. And so I was able to gain some real insight there and just share some of my little tidbits here that, from, from hours and hours of discussion here and just kind of the highlights. And so certainly on some of those things, if you're interested in presentations or further detail, I can certainly do that. I just kind of wanted to give you a, show the value of it, and so it just really, my, I think this is a great, I'm leading by example here in other areas I've been at. You demonstrate what you learn, and so I go to classes and go to these things. I did it last month with the local-state one that I went to, and so I went to this international one, so gained a lot of insightful information and was able to share some of the tidbits there with you. A lot of discussion on diversity, inclusion, and equity, and those are major focuses of the organization I belong to, and I certainly believe in that, and they've got a lot of great data, a lot of great justification and ways that you address those issues.
Any other input or questions? Seeing none, I think we are at the.
Hold up. I have, I have an answer for Councilmember Muns.
Thank you.
Basically, when we were, we were transitioning over to the new website, we wanted to make sure that the payments, you know, for utility billing and Marina worked properly. So that's all that was, testing electronic payment methods, just to ensure that things, you know, we wouldn't just put a new website on board and then nobody could pay their bills. We wanted to test it out ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. It just, it just listed as a very small bullet, and it, I just need a little bit more information. And want to be sure that Sabrina's congratulated for being accepted to the Northwest Women's Academy. That is wonderful.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Muns. We, the Northwest Leadership Academy is a very exciting program. It was a very long list of people who were, who had submitted applications. So Blaine and I were both very excited when I was accepted. It will be a very strenuous program for several weeks, but it will be very exciting to be able to work with other city leaders across the state, so I'm very excited about that. And then just to add on to what David said about the website, I'm sorry it was such a short blurb. The purpose of that was that I was giving you updates over email, so I just wanted to make sure that we covered, that we were, you know, continuing to work on that, because those were the final steps with the website.
Thank you very, very much.
Also, in case anybody's curious, per the 2020 census, the median household income for the city of Oak Harbor was $56,889, and for the state of Washington, it was $77,006. Oak Harbor is 26% less than the state of Washington.
Okay. Well, yes, Counselor Hoffmeyer?
Real quick, I didn't think I had anything more, and then we, we went ahead and we panned over to Sabrina's office. Sabrina, the plaque above your right shoulder, be your own hero. Good job. We're proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, council. Good meeting, a lot of great questions. Thanks to the public for being here and supporting us, and the citizens who are watching. Thank you. We are adjourned.